The City of Victoria Planning Commission Regular Meeting, scheduled for Thursday, March 19th, 2019, to order. First order on our agenda is approval of the minutes. So would the commissioners look over the minutes? And do I hear a motion?
Move, we approve?
I have a motion on them.
Second.
And I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Minutes pass. Next thing on our agenda is citizen communication. Anyone wishing to, uh, anyone wishing to recognize this commission on any subject, any issues other than what's on this agenda, please do so at this time. All right? We don't have anybody. We'll go ahead and close that section and open it up to development, reviews, and formal actions. Jared?
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Our first item on the agenda is Fleetwood subdivision resub number three. This is a preliminary and final plat of seven lots on 1.2 acres. The subject property is located near the intersection of Fleetwood Drive and Miore Lane in East Victoria. The property is currently vacant, and the owner wishes to plat the property into six duplex, two-family residential lots, and one general commercial lot. Access to the lots will be provided via proposed common driveway on Miore. Water service will be provided by a proposed extension of an eight-inch main in Miore Lane. Sanitary sewer service will be provided by a proposed extension of an eight-inch main in Miore. And drainage will be in accordance with the master drainage plan of the City of Victoria. Here is the preliminary plat for your review. Here's the final plat, basically showing the same things. Staff has reviewed this plat and finds that it's in compliance with the applicable requirements contained within subdivision and development regulations, and we recommend approval of both the preliminary and final. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Is there a reason why we're doing the preliminary and final all in one?
Um, we had to extend the water and sewer lines, so that triggers the preliminary.
Our ordinance allows you to simultaneously, allows us to simultaneously approve a preliminary and final plat, too.
Makes it tough for anybody that wants to come out and comment against it if they choose to, if we're doing both all in one fell swoop.
That's why this, well, this one has a, ooh, I don't see that on there. There needs to be a public hearing. This was on your agenda last month, and the reason it got held over was because the public notice was published in the wrong portion of the Victoria Advocate, so it was republished this time. And we will need to have a public hearing.
I was thinking we needed to.
Noticing that's not on the agenda there, but yeah, we'll need to, we'll need to have a public hearing.
Notice is worse than out of the mill.
Well, just a little bit.
So we're legal in that aspect. I don't want to.
That's what confused me, letting you see public hearing on the agenda.
Yeah, I didn't either. I was gonna. Just as long as we're up and up, and we have the city attorney there, so he'll know if we do it wrong, we.
You'll get the phone calls.
Yeah. That it? We'll go ahead and deliberate. Anybody have any?
It's gonna be one driveway for all six units, is what it looks like, right?
Yes, sir. All six of the residential units.
Beg your pardon?
The residential units, yeah.
Duplexes?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. You're gonna have six duplexes, one entrance, as far as on-street parking, is that gonna be an issue there? I'm just curious.
I don't think they'll be able to park on Miore.
Each one will be required to have two parking spaces in front of it.
No issue with the fire and?
No, sir.
They look at it okay. That's good.
I believe ultimately you'll see another phase of this that'll continue further down south on Miore where that will continue.
On the other side of the commercial?
Yeah, there's gonna be a driveway going to the commercial lot?
It's like, um, on the original, I guess, resubdivision number two of this, where you see the six duplex lots, that was previously platted as commercial, so they've come back in and are re-subdiving it. What I'm saying is, it's highly likely that as these are successful, they'll come back and they'll replat that commercial into more duplex, and you'll see that driveway continued on and where there'll be another entrance and exit off down on Miore.
Yeah, 'cause that was gonna be my next question is, is this plat doesn't show any entrance for the commercial lot other than?
Well, they would be allowed to have their own independent driveway on the Miore.
The entrance is only shown here because it's a mutual access easement.
I was just concerned about parking. It didn't seem like, I mean, a whole lot of space. That's a lot of people living in a very little parking area.
What are they doing, Tangerine?
Yeah, but that, I think traffic's not as much as it is on Miore in Tangerine.
That was the only issue I had as far as if that had been addressed or talked about. Talking six families? With six families, six units, just repacked?
Well, the, you know, our subdivision ordinance doesn't allow a residential unit to have direct driveway access to the, a collector. Miore Lane is a collector.
Miore is a collector.
Uh, and all the subdivision, the same ordinance only requires a minimum of two parking spaces per unit, so they'll have that. I do understand what you're talking about, you know, where does a guest park or whatnot, but.
And the shared road is only 20 feet wide? Am I reading that correctly?
That's probably the width of the easement.
Trying to fit a lot on a little space. Part of it, I guess.
I was gonna say a little lot.
There's still six, almost six dozen square feet, so even though they're narrow, they do.
I guess if it was just three residences, I wouldn't say, no problem, but you got six. But this meets code, so a lot of people.
Well, as long as, I think, you know, we've got, it's meeting a code, it's, there's no variance, so we just have to, that's something if we need to, if there's some issues around that, we can, this committee can ask Jared, hey, we wanna look at the law, you know, we can change that down the road, you know, if we see that it's becoming more and more issue, but that's something that, that's.
We're looking at both preliminary and final of the same meeting here, too.
But, I don't think you can change that, no way, even if we did, if it was just for the preliminary plat, because you gotta go through so rigor, you know what I mean?
I understand.
So anyway, if there's any.
Have concern.
No, that's valid. If there's no more deliberation, I'm gonna open it up to a public hearing.
Well, I had a couple questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there, or I guess, what's the reason why the setback from Miore is 45 to 49 feet for that shared access easement? Could it not be closer? I'm just, I mean, I'm kind of a little concerned about, what do you do if, you know, somebody has a graduation party and there's 10 cars that are gonna be visiting at one house? Where are they gonna park? There's not enough room on the road to park them on the road.
But they can't park on the road, that's what, 'cause, no.
They're not allowed to park on Miore. You could, you have, you know, I guess they could park in the grass. I would hope some people would use some common sense in that I don't have parking at my, the place that I've chosen as my residence for 10 cars, so therefore they wouldn't have the 10-car graduation party you're talking about. Um, we have a similar, yeah, they could park on Fleetwood. You know, the reality is there are these same townhouses or duplex units on Miore, because of where the, I'm sorry, on Fleetwood, just right around the corner there, where the way the width of those driveways are, there's probably, there might be room for one car to park on the street, on their side of the street. It's, it's, this is a common issue that we have.
Okay, I'm just.
And there's nothing that would prevent the developer or whatnot from adding some parking. As you mentioned, it's 45 feet from Miore, they could add some additional parking units on there. There's nothing in our code that require, that allows us to require that, though. That makes sense.
Yeah, and it would be market-driven.
Yeah, market-driven, you know.
If you think you're gonna have lots of parties, big trucks and trailers, you don't buy that property.
And the, those lots are really deep, so I, you know, we don't really know what the house, footprint of the house is gonna look like. The driveway itself could actually wind up holding four cars. I don't know, but they're, that's not an area that we'd get into, as long as they have the minimum two-car parking spaces where we issue the permit and move on down the road, but.
I'm just looking at the aesthetics of it, but code doesn't address aesthetics.
And that shared access road, that's city-maintained, or is it gonna be developer-maintained?
Private.
Private.
I would assume concrete.
I suppose. I suppose. Concrete or asphalt?
Well, that, I don't know, you may have said it, that private road will, from a drainage perspective, I'm sure there's certain things that we're gonna do from a, from a construction part, to make sure that that road doesn't flood, when that private road doesn't flood for the homeowners. Hopefully, we have, and I know we do, the city will be looking at that from an engineering perspective, once we get the building construction.
They did submit construction plans that were approved.
Okay. No, 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 okay. I just wanna make sure we, and we have, so that's, that's good. All right?
Just future reference, as a, just that this commissioner would prefer not to have preliminary and final at the same meeting? Just preference. That's just preference.
Okay.
I know we can do it, I'm just.
It's allowed in the code, and so sometimes that's what they're doing.
I understand.
For timeliness, so.
Just preference.
Anymore? Now, I'm gonna open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address this commission at this time? All right? Don't have anybody? We'll go ahead and close that. We'll open it back up to our team. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Rashid. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Zach, I have a second by Zach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The preliminary and final plat has been approved by this commission.
So, um, our next agenda item is the ordinance revisions to the sign ordinance, which I'm happy to finally be able to present to the commission. You know, we've been working on this, I think, since January, so it's nice to finally be here to explain all of them to you. This first started as actually a few small amendments for advertising flags and to allow multi-tenant signage because of the number of variances that the commission was seeing for multi-tenant sign type request. And so, we originally just drafted those few small amendments and sent it on to the city attorney's office, which then, once he got ahold of it, realized that our sign ordinance was a bit outdated and needed a complete rewrite, really to allow us to enforce. For example, we had a whole section of, in our sign ordinance, had prohibited signs, but it didn't say that it was an offense to erect a prohibited sign, so therefore if someone erected a prohibited sign, we had a very difficult time pursuing code enforcement and going through the municipal court process and really making sure that those prohibited signs were to come down. So those are the type of things that our city attorney's office addressed in this complete rewrite of the ordinance. But to just go through the few substantive changes that the planning staff drafted, if you will turn, or actually, on the very first page, number three is the new definition for advertising flag, which is any piece of lightweight plastic fabric or other material containing a message or part of a message designed to move in the wind and attract attention to a business, product, service, or activity. And then it excludes the official flag of the United States or any political subdivision to not be an advertising flag. So that new definition is in direct response to some specific code enforcement cases that we were having trouble getting through municipal court and getting compliance on what everyone kind of sees or calls as an advertising flag, but our definition just wasn't quite there to address the complaint, number of complaints we were receiving on some flags. The next substantive change is if you turn to page eight of the draft, and that is the multi-tenant signage regulations that I'd be happy to kind of briefly go over. So essentially, what, how we have drafted the multi-tenant signage regulations is to make it voluntary and allowed as a bonus. So we are not mandating that anybody move towards a multi-tenant sign, so anybody can at any time, you know, follow our regular sign ordinance of freestanding and wall signage. If they want to co-locate and have, you know, for example, the recent variance for the AT&amp;T case, that was a variance so that the AT&amp;T store could advertise on the Frost Bank lot, and so it would have been an off-premise sign. So this, these regulations allow that. And basically, if someone chooses to go that route, there is a bonus in the overall area of signs, but then the person that is co-locating on a multi-tenant sign can't have an additional freestanding sign. So there's some trade-offs. You get a bigger sign, but you, you know, lose your ability to have your own freestanding sign, although you can keep your wall signage. So that's how we create, crafted the multi-tenant signage, really to encourage it through a bonus. We also allow bonuses if there's common types of signage, common color scheme, or common lettering type, but at any time, people can follow, the, applicants can follow the standard sign ordinance for freestanding signs and wall signs, and do not have to, to request multi-tenant signs. So we really wanted to make it a bonus and not mandate it. And then the last section that we actually updated, once we got into it, was for the electronic signs and digital signs. Our ordinance for that section was the original 1984 ordinance, and as you know, technology has changed greatly since 1984. So our ordinance really only addressed the, what I like to call time and temperature-type signs, and didn't really address the almost TV screens that you see out on some signs in town today. So we did kind of break those two out and set glare standards and how quickly messages can scroll or be up on those signs so that we don't cause distractions and help make our words a little safer. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'll see if Thomas is here, willing to. Sure.
I have a question. Just out of curiosity, is there like a book on signs? I mean, what, how do you define this or that? Or, for example, the, as you said, on the digital signs, I think it has to change one second, or it can't last any more than five seconds, and then you get into nits and all that other stuff. Where does all this come from?
Yeah. I'll address that to some degree. Julie may wanna explain some of that, too. The timing standards that you referenced, the eight-second static display, is really just a community preference standard. We see that eight-second as kind of a standard amount of time in several cities around the state when I was doing this kind of research. It also, you know, you'll see things that it has to be static for, I think, did we say five seconds in the scrolling, or do we match those up?
Billboards are eight seconds, scrolling is three seconds, and then a image. And it depends on the type of sign, and it's really, I think, if you're driving down the road and you see a static sign, you know, your brain can process that instead, and then you can look back at the road, and then in five seconds, another signs up, so then, again, you can kind of, you're back and forth, so your eyes are on the road. Whereas if you have a rapid succession of changing messages, your eyes stay on that sign, and so we felt that the five seconds.
I guess the bigger issue, not so much the, the sign itself, but the whole, the whole detail, or whole definitions, or, I mean, I guess you look at other cities, as you alluded to, and.
Yes.
Somebody somewhere down the road has done some research and has felt that this is an adequate surface area for this type of sign.
Both, both that, as well as the professional opinions of the staff here about what, what is acceptable for our community, when you're talking about those timing standards. With respect to the brightness standards, there's a lot more scientific-based research that goes into that, as far as defining what a knit is, how bright that is. Those definitions that are, that I pulled into that section came out of white papers that were written by the sign industry about how you establish what is the brightness level of that. And to put it in context, you know, the, the brightness of the clear blue sky on a sunlit day is probably 1,500 nits, depending on which white paper you read. We're allowing 5,000 nits of brightness, so that's more than twice as bright as the clear blue sky, but somewhat less bright than the sun itself. Okay? That's plenty bright for a sign to stand out against a blue-sky background, all right? At night is really what we're more concerned about, because at night, you don't want that sign to dominate the environment, you don't want it to blind the driver as the driver's coming towards it. And so, community standards seem to be settling on around 300 to 500 nits, and we went with the more relaxed standard of 500, which is brighter. We're not asking them to turn the sign down as much as some communities are.
I also forgot to mention that we did meet with the sign industry, not once, but twice.
Yeah, absolutely.
Through this process.
And they were okay with that brightness level. Let me also say about the 500 knit, the reason that I settled on the, the less dim, the slightly more bright for at night, is because I did some research into how bright does text dot want the face of a lit sign to be from a reflective standpoint? And we tried to be in that ballpark, so it would, it would blend in with the background of other signs in the area. It's an inexact science.
I have a question about, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, just on an enforcement point of view, I noticed you said there's no motion, signs, movies, whatever you can, how, what about the car dealerships that have the full motion videos on Navarro, or is that just gonna be exempt?
That, that is currently a prohibited sign, and that's one of the problems that we have with our existing code. If the code says this is a prohibited sign, and code enforcement refers that to my court for prosecution, then I have to go out and prosecute the sign, not a person. What I really need in the courtroom is a person that I can attach that fine to. And so I've rewritten the ordinance so that it now says, a person commits an offense if that person creates that situation, puts that sign in place, or allows that sign to remain on their property. And so now we can go out to the property owner or the person who put up the sign, and we can bring that person into municipal court, and that makes it easier for us to prosecute those situations.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
How about the signs where the people are on the street wearing these cardboards on themselves, advertise pizza, or lazy boy chair, or whatever?
Now, that's a distraction.
I agree, it is a distraction. Those are not addressed in this ordinance.
We have those on every street corner right now.
I mean. Would that be an appropriate time?
Those on cardboard about this big.
If, if the planning commission is interested in staff going back and adding that in a future revision, that is something we could look at doing. It was not part of this rewrite. Remember, the goal of this rewrite was, was only a very few substantive revisions. We wanted to present a, an ordinance to the planning commission that could be passed. If you make too many changes and the industry is upset with the level of changes that are being made, we may have run into a situation where it would have been difficult for us to pass it, and then we wouldn't have been able to bring the changes that we all agree need to be made. So if there, if there are other changes to be made in the future, we'd be happy to bring those back in. We, we wanted to bring to you an ordinance that we thought we could get through and pass the first time around.
To, to bring, I guess, a article to address that particular sign, how much work is it gonna be, and when can it be presented if the commissions are in agreement that something that we wanna entertain?
How long did this process take? A couple of months? Yeah.
Well, it would just be adding a definition and then.
Just scribble it in here and initial.
I mean, like Bruce said, they're on every, every corner now. I mean, pizza and furniture.
Not just those, but the, other little cardboard ones, too. That's a whole different issue.
Yeah, that's a whole different issue. We also, you know, when you get into that type of situation, it becomes very complicated because you're gonna start bumping up against free speech rights, First Amendment rights, because certainly an individual has the right to be on a sidewalk speaking through a sign. And so, you have to be very, very careful when you get into these, it's not even a temporary sign, it's, it's a momentary moment in time that this is happening right now, and it's very, very difficult to regulate those kind of things. When somebody's standing on public property, speaking through a sign that they're holding, let me just compare it to the people who stand on the sidewalk holding signs in protest. They might be protesting abortion, we see that in this community fairly often. Those signs, that's a free speech issue. And so, if we, if we take one step towards commercial speech, we can regulate commercial speech slightly more than we can regulate that level of political speech, okay? It's much easier to regulate something that is put in place and affixed to property because it's one step further removed from those free speech limitations. And so the closer we get to the guy standing on the corner waving a no-abortion sign, the harder it is for us to enact that, that legislation, all right?
Well, and you've got car wash signs that would fall under that, you've got we-support-the-troops signs, I mean, I could see that. Maybe a different tack would be, as an advertiser, part of the reason why you do that is because it's, it's cheaper than having a billboard, it's cheaper than, maybe we should be looking at.
Promoting, identifying, or calling attention to a business, product, service, or activity. I don't think any of those, but I am not an attorney.
Right. Mr. Hyde, let me just give you an example that may illustrate how difficult this can be. If I chose to go out on the sidewalk in front of City Hall, or even on the plaza, which is not anywhere near the road, and hold up a sign advertising Planned Parenthood, is that a business, or is that a political message? I have to be very careful when I'm drafting a resolution, or, excuse me, an ordinance, that I'm not creating a criminal offense that would prohibit somebody's ability to engage in protected speech. And so that's why I say it's difficult. I'm not saying it's impossible, but it would be difficult.
If they've referenced a clinic, then it would be.
I know, Planned Parenthood can be a clinic.
Then it would be, then it would be seen as commercial, I guess.
I have a different question. Are awning signs considered the same as wall signs with regard to multi, the multi-tenant wording that we put in place?
Yes, I believe they are.
It's a canopy sign. I think it's defined as a canopy sign.
So that would be considered, 'cause the multi-tenant says wall sign, like you, you mentioned, if you got, if you have a sign on a multi-tenant sign, you can't have a wall sign, or an off-premise sign other than a wall sign.
No, the.
But is a canopy considered?
Yeah, the multi-tenant actually is broken into two sections, the wall signs, and then when you go back to the definition of wall signs, that includes the canopy, and it gets into the 30% rules. And then we have the freestanding signs, and canopies are considered wall signs and not your freestanding sign. So the only prohibition on the additional sign is for the freestanding.
Thank you for clarifying that.
No, you go ahead. Well, just as a, as a, perhaps a format issue, does it make sense to include examples of these as an attachment? Just maybe in the future when we do some, or is it too encompassing? There's too many variances.
I don't recommend doing that. And the reason I don't.
Okay, boxes us in or something?
It can. It, in order for us to prosecute somebody, we need to be able to prove that they clearly understood what conduct was prohibited. And as soon as you introduce one example, the question arises whether you have excluded everything that is not that example. And so the more, the more ambiguity you create by trying to clarify, the harder it is to prosecute instead of easier.
Okay. What? Question. We, when this does get passed, if it does, or whatever, what kind of, what's our, do we have a time limit? How's that? I don't know what the time limit is, I was just.
Actually, when it becomes effective?
Yeah, I mean, when do you, you know?
The ordinance is effective, I believe it's 10 days after it's passed and published.
Okay, that's what I mean here.
But there will be some notification that we need to do, you know, especially on the electronic signs, because it's the messages.
Now, that's what I wanted to make sure everybody hears that.
So what we've decided to do internally is send a notice to the affected signs for the, the digital and electronic message, you know, for everyone that we can identify that has that type of sign, and basically say, we've identified that you have a sign that may be affected, and give them a copy of the regulations, and then say, after this date, you know, if you're not in compliance, then code enforcement will be pursuing, you know, corrective action.
There's a, there's a chance that when it gets passed to this commission, then gets city council passes it, that.
We also talked.
They're gonna have some violators out there.
Yeah, we also talked to the sign industry, and they said that they want to know, you know, they wanna be kept in the loop whenever it's gonna be passed, because they're gonna help us, you know, talk to their customers, specifically for the electronic signs.
And I, I agree with you with taking baby steps, but you continue to take those steps. That just, and look what's gonna be, what, take small steps. I applaud you for that. Thank you for saying.
I'm assuming no pushback from the. I'm assuming no pushback from the signage industry? No, it's not, I'm, with, with, no, I'm here tonight.
Yeah.
Kind of makes me...
Maybe I should ask you, have they been calling you?
My impression is there's a food of excitement that our enforcement will be easier.
Excitement from?
The sign industry.
Yeah, absolutely. I was surprised, when we met with them, that, that their response was that they were eager to see more enforcement of the signs that were out of compliance, particularly the dilapidated signs.
I have gotten that feedback, that...
They're frustrated from the current process.
Larger companies do comply with everything they have, have to, there's some of the folks that, individuals that are making them kind of look bad. I have heard that, so, yeah. Interesting.
So, where, I know we've addressed somewhat the mobile electronic sign that we've all been talking about. I'm looking under prohibited signs, and it talks about person. A person has committed an offense if a person allows termite on property controlled by the person. Part of the issue I have with signs like that, and, and right now, we've only got one real major one that, that you see all over the place, is that it's all over town. I mean, I've seen it parked on the Loop, I've seen it parked on Stockbauer. I mean, at, at least once a week, when I'm driving from west down to Colony Creek to drop my kid off for golf, I see that pickup truck parked in one of the drives at the construction site. But I don't see where that's... How do we charge them with an offense?
I'm flipping through the pages to, to try to find where I put that.
We made some changes to address that.
It's a moving sign.
It's in there.
It is. I remember, we put it in there, we specifically elim... You still have, way back on page 19 of 19, in subsection B, F, B1F, advertising vehicles are prohibited. And then, when you go to the definitions about what is an advertising vehicle, we're still talking about any vehicle trailer that has its primary purpose, the advertisement of a business, activity, product, or service. So any person that puts up an advertising vehicle, or uses an advertising vehicle in that way, is then going to be subject to prosecution under this. And I, I know that we addressed the, the fact that the vehicle is on the road somewhere else, and now it has escaped me at the moment where that is. So I'd be happy to, to give you that answer at a later date.
And the purpose of the ordinance is property, real property, or can property, does property also encompass, if I'm a business and I own a vehicle, that's property that the business owns, it gets taxed for, or is it specifically just real property?
Property, I don't believe, I'm flipping pages again, I don't believe property itself is a defined term. It's not. However, we typically use that word in this ordinance to refer to a piece of real estate where the sign is located.
I was looking at, just kind of along that same line, is, do we address anywhere, like if, I know, I haven't seen them, but like taxis that want to put advertising? In larger cities, I know they do that. Do we address that?
Well, the primary, that goes back to what the primary purpose of that cab is, and that, that's to be a taxi, so those would be allowed. John Doe's Plumbing is allowed to have his vehicle wrapped, or insurance office, you know, because the primary purpose is transportation, not to advertise. It just has a dual purpose, so those are still allowed.
I was just trying to find...
And I can't get my space on the side of my van and drive around with eight different advertisers.
There, there was a gentleman that did that, about 10 years ago, yeah.
Yeah, unless there's, unless there's something, you know, in our regulations related to taxis, it would not be considered an advertising vehicle.
Something like that.
The TV that you're talking about on the back of the truck would be.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, I'll see private vehicles riding around town with their trunk open with TVs in the back of them.
Yeah.
That are just a distraction.
Is that going to be in violation?
But that, that would be a, to me, that's a text dot violation, not a sign ordinance violation.
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, I noticed that moving, advertising truck is parked a lot, so will it be exempt if they park it? Or just if it's on the road, active?
No, it's a violation if it's parked.
Right, it's a violation if it's parked. And then, and the, the reason that it's so frustrating, and Julie and I are over here flipping pages so furiously, is because we had a, a great conversation about that exact issue when we were drafting the ordinance, and I remember that we put language in here specifically to capture that, and now neither of us can remember what we said. So I apologize, and I'm horribly embarrassed by that. But I, I'd be happy to bring that back to you at another time.
And then I know it's not part of this specific document that we're looking at, but the other part of improving some of these situations is to put some more teeth into the penalty phase of, I mean, you charged me 25 bucks for driving around in a, with a, with a mobile advertising, it may be worth it to me to pay 25 bucks every time I get a ticket.
I can do that 20 times and still be cheaper than a billboard on the road.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is part of the reason why the, the man held signs are out on Navarros, because it's cheaper to do that than pay for a billboard, or...
You, you mentioned a $25 fine, and I...
I'm not saying it is, I'm sorry.
I don't know what the fine is, but I know the, the maximum amount of the fine is up to $500 per day, and that's set at the discretion of the judge, of course. And so, I, I don't know what she has been issuing for violations of the sign ordinance, just because I don't have those numbers at hand, but it, it would be substantially more than $25.
Thank you. I was just using that as a, I knew, when I looked at it one time, it seemed rather low, that sometimes if you just put teeth into it, that it makes it cost prohibitive.
We do have a statutory cap on the amount that we can fine an individual for a violation in municipal court, and it's $500, unless it's a health and safety violation.
But it could be each day, so if they keep it up for a week, it could, at the discretion of the judge, be five, you know, for each, each is a violation, and she could issue a $500 fine for each violation, so five days, that's $500 a day. There could be a different point where it's not working.
And I can tell you that my prosecutor has been willing to do that recently. We had a significant case that just got resolved very recently, where there was an individual who was in violation of a different ordinance, and was, was willing to pay the fine, because it was cheaper than fixing the problem. And our prosecutor went back and, I think, filed 30 cases in one day, for a period of 30 days. And so you look at the maximum fine across 30 days of violation, it gets to be a significant amount.
Well, I can do wording. I, I like, you've done a good job of clearing up some things, and giving a little bit more definition to who's at fault in certain situations, and who's responsible. And that, that's good, that's always an improvement.
We don't have any more, we'll go ahead and, do we have a motion?
I believe we adopt.
We have a motion by Vic to adopt this sign. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Miss Dean, and all those in favor of this new amendment to the sign ordinance for the City of Victoria, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Amendment to the sign ordinance passes this commission.
Thank you for your work, folks.
Thank you.
I know, I know it took a while.
Other business.
You've got your development report in your packet. We'd be happy to take any questions. February was a little bit of a slow month for us, actually January and February, both were a little slow, but judging from the amount of paperwork that's come in the last few weeks, it's, it's picked up a little bit, so...
Did the time pass, I'm assuming, for the Luby's and the what have you, so they...
It expires sometime in May.
May, May.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious where this stood.
I don't think we've heard anything from them recently, so, I don't know if we'll hear something in, I think I already gave this to... I don't know if we'll hear something in the next few weeks or not, I sure hope so. But the other restaurants are under, underway.
See a lot of dirt being moved around there.
Panda Express has their foundation down. I don't know about Chipotle.
Dirt's moving at Chipotle, I know that, I don't know if they've, I don't know if they've gotten, probably with the weather, they probably haven't gotten their concrete in, but...
All right.
And the Firehouse Subs, I know...
Haven't seen the status of that one.
The, the previous tenant has moved out, and we've gotten the plans for it, I just don't know if they've started. I think they were hiring one of the job sites, someone told me they were hiring, so, I think that's a pretty good indication they're coming. Any more questions on that?
Mr. McLinky, if I may, I remembered the Eureka moment that we had when we were writing, and how we were addressing the advertising vehicles. A vehicle that is, that has its primary purpose of advertising is a type of sign called an advertising vehicle. When that sign is on the, on any location other than the site of the business being advertised, it's an off-premise sign, which is a billboard. And so if it doesn't comply with a billboard ordinance, it is therefore an illegal sign, and the police officer can pull that vehicle over and issue a citation for an illegal billboard, as they're driving down the road. And so, we, we decided at that moment that we did not need to include additional language other than clearly defining that the advertising vehicle that is, is on-premise only when it's advertising what is on that location. And so that's, that's where that is captured, it's something that we had not previously considered as an enforcement opportunity for that particular situation, and we intend to work with the police department to ramp up enforcement of that situation. Okay? Thank you, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember that off the top of my head a minute ago, until I sat down. Thank you.
Just to clarify for folks that might be watching...
Yes, sir.
If you have a plumbing truck, an electrical truck, an AC truck, you're allowed to have those types of vehicles with your company advertising...
Absolutely.
Plaster all over it if you want.
If you're using your vehicle to transport yourself, your supplies, you're making errand runs in that vehicle, bugmobile, you know, you're going out to the location in order to do that service, you can put your signs on that, on that vehicle without a problem. A Mayflower moving van is a giant moving billboard that serves its primary purpose of moving furniture, and that's perfectly allowable. What's not allowable is a truck that doesn't transport anything except a billboard, or a trailer that's parked in a field for the sole purpose of mounting plywood on it in order to set up a sign. Those kinds of things are not allowed, because the primary purpose of that vehicle, then, is solely to advertise.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
All right, next plan you want to talk about?
Sure. There should be in front of each of you, a postcard, a little flyer about the city's big-picture outreach for the Plan 2035. You've probably gotten an email from us, you'll probably get another email from us in the next week and a half, reminding you about that. This, not to be confused, this is not the Victoria Alliance project, this is the city's master plan, and I know several of y'all know that, but just for the benefit of the viewing public. So, that meeting is, I guess, a week and a half away, Tuesday, March 31st, 5:30, the Community Center, would sure love to have all of you there. Bring your friends, neighbors, family, all, anyone that you can drag with you. Also, real quickly, if you happen to have a Facebook account, if you'll like, there's a, our department has a web, a Facebook page called Voice of Victoria, or Voice of Victoria, Texas. If you'll do us a favor and like that, this postcard is on there, you can even, there's a way, those of you that are kind of savvy with Facebook, there's a way to share this postcard that's on there.
There's a contest.
Yeah, there's even a contest to win two free VIP passes to Boot Fest 2015. If you'll, you'll get it, you'll become eligible if you'll, if you'll share, like and share our page. Y'all know that social media can go a little viral, so that's one more way for us to get the word out. We're trying to pull all the stops out and get as many folks to this meeting as possible, because it's a better plan if we have more, the more input we have, the better plan it'll be, and the more well-representative of our community it will be, so...
And to make it easy for everyone, that email I sent you with this postcard, there's links at the bottom that'll, you can click on that, I'll take you directly to our Facebook page, so if you're logged in, then you can like it and share it, and get the word out.
All right.
Take it in screaming to the 21st century.
All right. If that's it, we'll go to items from the planning commission. Everything going all right with the committee? Y'all two gentlemen, on?
Got it all figured out.
We'll, we'll learn a lot more on the 31st.
Well, and I, and I, but again, it takes people like you to make it successful, and we appreciate it. I don't have anything, does any... If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?